Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, October 25, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Clerk, please take the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Mr. Coghill.
Ms. Gross.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle, Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you, and I would simply ask members to be a little patient with me this morning as I'm doing this remotely. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like for my all speakers, as rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deboration, which are or may be before City Council and profanity is not permitted. Please restate your name and provide your neighborhood for the record. After you recall, you'll be given three minutes to speak. I believe our first speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here. I honor my husband. He was a true city of Pittsburgh's public servant from the early, actually mid-1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals, and Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. The Pennsylvania Constitution is titled "The Declaration of Rights." The entire article is concerned with establishing the principle that the people are the sovereigns, not the state, which would include municipalities and school boards. They shall not harm the people or will be held accountable. Here's the situation. An excellent school was closed. The building has become a threat and detrimental harm. Three, it should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. It must be torn down. Parks and Pittsburgh funds used to make it into a green space. The residents of Bon Air care for it as volunteers. Why are we paying taxes for continued detrimental problems? Why should we pay taxes for a detriment? In the Bon Air neighborhood, we are being threatened with this detrimental building, and it's deteriorating costing taxpayers thousands per month. We say no to anything except a green space to replace the school building. Excrement in hallways and crime is not acceptable to the Bon Air residents. The Pittsburgh Public Schools stated that World Health Organization guidance when it closed the schools for months. The WHO is an unelected, diplomatically immune, tax-exempt group. Eighty-four percent of funding for it is from external commercial sources. The Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation is an example of billions being given to fund their personal agenda. Sweden and Florida are two examples of a superior outcome of business and educational situations. Stopthewho.com. No more global mayors or global Pittsburgh Public Schools decisions. Stopthewho.com. Exit thewho.com. Screw thewho.com. Shady trees, not shady deals, and Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
He's not here.
Okay. So then our next speaker would be Ms. Carmen Brown.
She's not here, and she's not online.
And then our next speaker is Emma Byer.
She's not online.
I do not see online with us. And I don't see anyone coming to the podium. Therefore, our next speaker is Chief Akahana Hamalkina.
Not online.
Therefore, our last registered speaker, whom I do believe I see, is Chief Poma Chakman Yahalahi.
Greetings, everyone. Grand rising. In the CAC Alakaki, the light in me honors the light in you. My title is Chief Poma Chakman Yahalahi. I'm a grand council member and chief of medicine of the Air Quack Confederacy of Aboriginal and American People Processing Inka of the Hunkway Hunkway Nation. I'm here today to talk about what is the foundation of the laws that are built upon on this country?
He said he can take over.
Well, for supportive primary resources regarding the Civil Rights Act of 1866, the origins of the United States Constitution, Fourteenth Amendment, disenfranchising the American so-called Negro under that amendment, and the folly of colonization by Congressman Frederick Douglass, who stood against that. The true history is that the European customs of enslaved and pale white people and the involuntary servitude of dark-skinned people was abolished on December 6, 1865, under the United States Constitution Amendment 13, and passed by Congress on January 31, 1865, which states neither slavery nor involuntary servitude, except as a punishment of crime, for crime, whereof the party shall have been duly convicted, shall exist within the United States and any place subject to their jurisdiction. Therefore, the false narrative of dark-skinned European slaves coming to the Americas by the millions on massive ships along with their white slaves' masters is a big cover-up of the real truth, which is the doctrine of discovery, or the great robbery of all Americans in America's lands, resources, and the identities of our indigenous Aboriginal and American peoples. Also, the true history is that there were many indigenous Aboriginal and American nations and confederacies under the laws of the Great Peace throughout the entire Western Hemisphere, prior to the doctrine of discovery, and prior to the United States Constitution, and prior to the creation of the United States Constitution and the Fourteenth Amendment. That amendment derives from the Civil Rights Act of 1865, '66. I stand corrected, which Congress generally granted full citizenship to former enslaved pale white people and dark-skinned European people who were indentured servants. The Civil Rights Act of 1866 states being enacted that all persons born in the United States and not subject to any foreign power, excluding Indians not taxed, are hereby declared to be citizens of the United States, and such citizens of every race and color without regard to any previous condition of slavery or involuntary servitude, quoting the 39th Congress Session, Chapter 1, 1866. So I will say, the legislation before you, take it into full purview of the context of who we are as the Aboriginal Americans, the Aboriginal people of the Americas, the so-called copper-colored races, the Indians not taxed, and be mindful that everyone took an oath to the Constitution to support that article, and everything within the Constitution, and all the laws that are bound by that too as well. I ask you to do the right thing. I implore you to do the right thing. Vote.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street, Leicester, K V R. Up at the top of Befford, that tall building you see up there. Yesterday, I had this sign, but I forgot about it. But here it is. "I matter, you matter, we matter, Black voters matter." And the only way we matter is that you vote. Don't just talk, "Oh, oh, oh, I don't get into politics." You better, because this whole system in this room is very, very racist, very colorism. The reason why I say this is that when anytime Tim Stevens, he's a lichen plecta fellow, comes to speak, he can speak as long as he want. He had three minutes. "May I continue?" Esther Bush, who was head of the Urban League, asked to speak. Paduto was then a councilman. He wasn't president. I mean, he wasn't mayor then. And she looked over at him, and he didn't do anything. And so she said, "Oh." So I go to Tim, and I'm saying, "Tim, they discriminated against..." He got real upset. "No, no, we had somebody." I said, "But he didn't get up and speak." And so he says, "Wait a minute, wait a minute." He gets to holler at me because he was then at the time NWA CP, but just like head of the NWA CP, just like I said, "Tim, you're nothing. You're nothing." And I mean it. I want you to understand what I have against this man. You must understand that when he came up to the church, Befford, that's my church, up to Befford, and they were having the police, we were having problems with the police, that he insisted, "We have to write our questions down. They pick which one you want." They want to say. You had Ms. Hinton, since she died, she was head of the OMI. She answered the question the man had written. Then he asked another, and she answered. I put my hand up, and Tim come running over in front of everybody. "No, no, scream." And I say, "What's up, Tim? What's up?" And he left. Also, it was the year that the NWA CP, from all over the United States, representatives came here to Pittsburgh. I found out that when they came, Tim Stevens had a contract with, there was a white restaurant, contract where he was singing. You know he did not take none of the black people up to the hill. All the older men came to me and were saying, "Do you know what he did?" So when I saw Tim, I said, "Tim, did you take and make a contract, and you sang, and you didn't take the people up there?" He started screaming at me then. But I do know how to step him back. I just kept on saying, "Come on, Tim. I'm trying to respect you. I'm trying to respect you," till I had to holler and say, "I'm trying to respect you, Tim," and he walks away. I'm telling you this because my son is dead because five white policemen in Wilkinsburg let him lay there and die. My time is up.
Thank you. Any further speakers in council wishing to speak, please come forward. Any further people in council wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will now turn it over to Madam President to chair the rest of our meeting, and I thank you for your assistance this morning.
Thank you, Councilman. I thank you for starting the meeting off. We'll now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda, and we'll begin with... You did the roll call already, right? Okay. We'll begin with the deferred papers. Madam President, Madam Clerk?
Bill 1946, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 27, 2022, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Park Reconstruction Parks Tax Deliverable Trail Asset Management Plan Parks Tax by $150,000 and Increasing Park Reconstruction Parks Tax Deliverable West End Park Drive Parks Tax by $150,000."
Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion approved, please.
Thank you, Councilman. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to thank our budget office for working to make sure that this road that leads to the West End Park has been closed for landslide, and our budget office director, Peter McDebitte, made sure that he worked through to find the funding to get this taken care of this year instead of delaying another project. So thank you to the director, and thank you for the people doing the work. Oh, is it all in favor? That's it? Okay. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Bill's affirmatively recommended. And our next paper?
Bill 2054, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Charter's Valley District Flood Control Authority in an Amount Not to Exceed $117,204 over one Year Relating to Full and Final Settlement of a Case Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Do you have a motion to...
Motion approved, please.
Thank you, Councilman. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's affirmatively recommended.
Bill 2055, Resolution Providing for the Cumberance of Funds in the Amount of $588,514.92 to Secure a Stay During the City's Appeal of a Fraternal Order of Police Grievance Award.
Motion approved, please.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We don't have, we don't have this for anything? No executive session or anything?
Uh-uh.
I think I kind of like an executive session to understand what this is exactly for. Thank you. Have a motion to...
Motion for executive session.
Second.
Thank you.
We need to withdraw the motion to approve first.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, forgive me.
Yes. It is...
Yes, I'll withdraw my motion for approve.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Gross?
I'd like to motion to hold the bill pending an executive session.
A second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll hold the bill for an executive session. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Bill 2056, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to acquire all rights, title, and interest to the property located on Coin Terrace in the 15th Ward and identified as Block 54R Lot 92 in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, and known as the Coin Terrace Stairs for the sum of $6,900, plus all necessary and incidental expenses in connection with such acquisition.
Motion approved, please.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I can briefly explain. So these are some stairs that were privately owned, and there was some dispute with the neighbors and the people who owned them about, you know, people wanted to use them to access the bus. And it's been a while, and folks are going to be very happy now that they are back in the city's possession, and I anticipate the 311 requests to start coming in. So that's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Madam President, may I comment?
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick, good morning. I believe this dates back a number of years, even as far back as Councilwoman Connor's maybe first or second year on council. Are these the stairs I'm thinking of?
It could be. It has been a long, it's been a long time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objection? I mean, any abstentions? Bill's affirmatively recommended. Madam Clerk?
Bill 2057, Ordnance Amending and Supplementing Section 197.09 of the City Code under Article 11 of Title I Administrative by Creating a Process to Recruit New Members, Increasing the Relevancy of Qualification Standards, and Improving Other Internal Administrative Affairs of the Ethics Hearing Board.
Motion approved, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Could we have the... Folks, come to the table.
I'll defer to Councilwoman Lavelle for your wish to comment.
Sure. Madam President, I believe Ms. Davis is probably here to speak to this, but although I'm the sponsor, this really didn't start with me. This was really a conversation amongst Ethics Hearing Board board members about how to increase the pool that will be willing to serve and sort of loosen up some of the restrictions in order to be able to recruit more individuals to actually serve on the ethics hearing board.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want to introduce yourselves to the public?
Hi, I'm Leanne Davis. I'm with the Ethics Hearing Board, and I have here today Alex...
Alex Matthews, former Chair of the Ethics Hearing Board. Still a member.
And former Pittsburgh Public School Board member.
And a former Pittsburgh Public School Board member.
Known for decades. Anyway, do you want to give us a little synopsis of what the changes might be?
Oh, absolutely. So this only involves Section 19709, which is purely the board's internal administrative affairs. It doesn't have any impact on city workers or officials or any other substantive provisions. It looks to kind of just to bolster their internal structure and to kind of adopt some current practices regarding recruitment of new members, whereby we can kind of keep a file of resumes so that when we go to these nominating panel members, if they don't have an internal candidate in mind to nominate, they can review like a selection, a wide array of different resumes of other interested candidates and serving. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I can go on if you'd like.
I just feel like there's just been a lot of questions lately around ethics in general. You know, we did our own inquiry at the state level, and just to be honest with you, you know I've never been a fan of the whole thing, because I think if you have a propensity to do something illegal, you're going to find a way around it anyway. But I do think that there's a value in having somebody overseeing in the board. But unfortunately, those boards are also political appointments in often cases. So I just, I'm trying to understand how you have such a balancing act there and how you do your work. I know you, so...
Yes, absolutely. So I think this actually addresses some of those concerns by making it less of a political appointment position.
But less of city council or less of the mayor's office? Less of whom?
So right now, it's structured to have nine members, only one mayor's seat, only one council seat, and the other seven are from community, educational, legal groups to make their own nominations, so that it's very independent. It's not just a mayor's board.
Or city councils, right. I want to make sure that there's just clear distinction.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. I just want to make sure you're able to do your job effectively, because otherwise we just have all these boards that are really ineffective, doing a lot of, you know, to be honest with you, a lot of nothing because they're overseen by political, you know, officials or elected officials. And that's on every level, you know. So it just concerns me in general. I just wish, really wish we had a clear process where, I mean, like, we just recently saw something yesterday, I think it was, where somebody, I don't want to talk about it now at the table, I need to verify the information, but somebody on an ethics commission got a recent grant in the city of Pittsburgh, or a recent contract in the city of Pittsburgh. And it just, for me, I just want to make sure that those boards are really doing the work of the people and not the work of elected officials, that you're looking out for the public's interest in dollars. Okay, that's it. I'm happy to support.
Madam President?
Yes.
Whenever you're done, I just had a quick question.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. Hi, Leanne. So does this eliminate city council's president's appointment to that board?
No, no. It just gives you a wider array of people to consider, and it also allows you to, when you find somebody that's a great candidate, even if it's not your time for that appointment right now, you can kind of put them into a pool of candidates moving forward. We found because of the complexity of some of these laws that we're looking at, someone with a legal background is often preferred, but we have the residency requirement as well as the fact that we can't have them interested in city business, so we don't want them to be someone who has under contract with the city. And as you know, the Law Department has several outsourced contracts with several firms throughout the city, so we need to make sure that they're not overlapping in that way, yeah.
I want to thank you for reaching out yesterday. I'm sorry I couldn't find the time there, but you've always been very responsive to myself and Lisa, and I do appreciate that. So as it is now, the mayor has an appointment.
Correct.
One. Council president has one appointment.
Correct.
How are the others?
So the others are listed here...
Not necessarily who, I mean how. You know, who appoints the others? You?
No, there's one from the County Bar Association, one from the Urban League, one from an educational group, one from the different law schools. They rotate from Pitt to Decane. There's also the Chamber of Commerce and the Labor Council. We have our longest-standing members from the Labor Council. He's a great contributor. He's been our secretary for a number of years.
So everybody who's appointed is appointed by a separate entity? There's no two appointments from one?
Absolutely, yeah. And some of the feedback I've gotten in years past was that, you know, "We're a small organization. Nobody on our board is interested, so I don't know what to tell you, Leanne." I'm like, "Well, look, here's, so you can look outside of your organization as well for these nominations."
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Leanne.
Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President. I know that for some of our board's authorities and commissions, anyone who expresses interest can go on the city's website, I think particularly the mayor's website, and put their name in to be considered when there's an opening. And I wonder if the Ethics Hearing Board is one of those, or do you rely solely on the nomination of those different entities?
Absolutely. That's, I wish I had the name of the website to promote it right now. Is it through the Engage Pittsburgh, perhaps, where you can sign up to be a volunteer for a board or commission? I do know that we are...
EngagePGH volunteer signup page, if you look up board's authorities and commissions on PittsburghPA.gov. Yeah. And I guess I can check myself to see if this is one of them, but I wanted to see. I was curious about the process. Like, do you have to take it from those nominations from those entities, or can anyone apply?
From my preliminary work, like, for example, I've met with some ethics professors and encouraged them to apply, and they'll send me their resume, and I say, "No, you still have to fill out this form," you know. So that's my understanding, is that I direct recruits to that website as how it's processed right now.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's good to hear.
Thank you. Any other members? I just want to thank you, because I think you have a really, you know, challenge working with so many of us and being in such a public position, that people are really relying on you to do, make sure that things are happening in the right way here. So I want to thank you for your work. I'm happy to support.
Thank you.
Okay, can I? That's it. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve? Or, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
We did make a motion to approve, right?
Yeah.
Can we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
No, we did.
We did? I thought we did. Okay.
Yeah, we just need to vote.
Okay. Okay. And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's affirmatively recommended. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Continuing to volunteer.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the invoices?
So move.
Any, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Where's next? Well, Councilman Lavelle does such a better job at this. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the P cards?
So move.
Motion approved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? I just have one I want to remove, actually, until we have a chance to look at it. Our deputy director sent an email saying that the only item that on the invoices, I'm sorry, and P cards, is on the invoices?
Is P card, that's on the invoices, up under Public Safety, under Police.
So we should do that?
For the reimbursement. Yeah, you have to make a motion. P is right here. Is that the one that you're removing?
That's only invoices. Okay.
You have to withdraw the motion to approve the invoices.
Okay. So can I have a, can I withdraw the motion to approve the invoices?
I withdraw my motion for approve.
Okay, thank you. And let me just tell you real quickly what the...
Somebody has to withdraw their second as well, Madam President.
Can you withdraw your second, Councilman Coghill?
Second.
Thank you. And then, and let me just tell you what I'd like to remove, and it's just until we get some way to figure this out. Our deputy director sent an email saying the only one that she wants to point out on the invoices and P cards this week is the reimbursement for Chief Scrotto for $4,125, which includes $2,500 for his transitional housing expenses. He's already been reimbursed $5,000 so far, his moving expenses, for his moving expenses. His offer letter attached did say that he would be reimbursed for moving expense, however the city's internal policy for employee recruitment and transitional expenses only allows for up to $3,000. Everything else is fine, nothing over $5,000. So we're going to remove that and try to figure out how we have to pay that, because I'm not certain myself. I apologize for not having time to ask.
It's a motion then to delete under Police the reimbursement of $4,125 for Chief Scrotto at this time.
Yes. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry to do this.
I'm sorry to do this, point of order. Did, didn't we already just vote, we had a motion to approve that we were currently on the table for the P cards? I thought we'd actually already approved the invoices.
We did, she went back and made the motion to withdraw.
But that's just, when you withdraw, it's the current motion, which would just be, the motion to withdraw would have been to reconsider the P cards. I think we just need a simple motion to reconsider for the invoices.
To vote for, to just make a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider the invoices, motion to reconsider?
Motion, and second. And then now, Councilman Kraus, please delete the, make a motion to delete.
We're just going to vote aye, if I can get a vote aye on motion to reconsider the invoices.
Motion to reconsider the invoices, is a, is a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Discussion. Councilman Kraus, now could you please make the motion to delete this until we figure out how to do this right?
Yes, Madam President, under police, the deletion of, motion to delete at this time reimbursement of expenses totaling $4,125 for Chief Scrotto.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The item is deleted. Now, do we need one for the, all the invoices?
No, we need to reapprove the, I think we need to reapprove the invoices.
The invoices, and she just-
Okay, so now we have a motion to approve the remaining, remainder of the invoices.
Motion to approve.
And second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you both for getting us through that. All three of you, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk?
Then we need to-
Now we're moving to Public Safety.
Yeah, can we, could you please read the bill under Public Safety?
Bill 2059.
We need to approve the P cards. We were in the middle of discussing P cards when we motioned to withdraw, so I'm going to motion to approve, motion to approve the P cards.
Okay, motion, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards approved. Now, Madam Clerk, please move to the next bill.
Public Safety and Wellness Committee, chaired by Mr. Coghill, Bill 2059, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $1 million to support the Office of Community Health and Safety's efforts to develop and pilot a post-overdose support team to respond to overdoses with teams of certified peer recovery specialists and case managers.
Can we motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
A second, just a second special.
Councilman Kraus.
Thank you very much, Madam President, I appreciate it. Is someone here to speak to the purpose of the bill?
Yes, yes.
Yes, Councilman.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning. Please introduce yourself to the public when you get a second, and then Councilman Kraus will ask the questions.
Good morning, thank you for having us. I'm Camila Larkon, I'm the Assistant Director for the Office of Community Health and Safety.
And I'm Jessie Smurga, I'm one of the community social workers.
Morning, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to provide you the opportunity to speak to the purpose of the bill, the funding being assigned to it, its origin, and what our outcomes are expected to be, please.
Thank you. This was a requisition that was done over a year and a half ago through the Office of Congressman Doyle, and usually those take a year and a half to really get approved. So we got approval in April, and we sent our project, and so the agency that usually provides these grants is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, which is SAMSA, and so what we have been seeing is, this project is supposed to really mitigate continuing overdoses. As we see in the city, we're currently suffering a lot of overdoses, and the problem is they're recurring, and those are more likely to end in death. What we're seeing with, we've been working with EMS and police to gather data. We're seeing the most incidents are happening in downtown and in the south side. What we see is that people are refusing medical attention. So what happens is they're revived through Narcan, but then they refuse to go to the hospital. That leaves them more vulnerable, that leaves them an immediate withdrawal, which then they go and use an overdose, and that can end in a fatal overdose. So what this program will do is have a teams that will be deploying through EMS of a case manager and a peer recovery specialist. So this is a program that has been very successful in the United States, especially in Arendal in Maryland, in different counties of California, and different counties in New Orleans. And what they find is that people who are experiencing these overdoses are mainly unhoused, in extreme poverty, and so they have been very traumatized by the healthcare system. So having a case manager and a peer recovery specialist deploy provides them with the different resources and aid to prevent a recurring overdose. So for example, the case manager will provide the guidance and services to rehabilitation, to MAT, methadone, buprenorphine, but a lot of the times, because we're seeing such a high demand, there's a 24-hour waiting period, and so people are just left on the street to overdose again. So what the, what this program does, it allows the case manager to provide them temporary housing, there be in motel or in a hotel. It also helps with de-escalation, so sometimes they just need a meal, sometimes they just need a coffee, sometimes they just need other mental and behavioral health services. We are also adding a peer recovery specialist. These are people who are trained. We're working with Unity Recovery, they have a program that is statewide. They train peer recovery specialists, and these are people with lived experience, who themselves have been in active drug use, and so that creates a little bit more trust. We've been working, we'll be working directly with EMS out of Medic 14 and Medic Station 3, which are downtown and south side. And we'll be also providing harm reduction supplies, which are Narcan, and all these different test strips to keep people safe. And these teams will be three teams, and they will be deploying through EMS. So EMS calls the teams, they'll actually be stationed at the medic stations, and they will be deployed as EMS calls them. And this is new, because usually they have worked as alternative response, but the success is to be working ingrained in EMS.
Yeah, thank you. I have some more, I guess, direct questions. Can you tell me a little bit about the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration? Is that, is that local, is that state, is that federal? If I understand correctly, Congressman Doyle, and kudos to the congressman for his years of service, we have already accepted a $1 million grant from the congressman. This is to ask you to be able to spend the money in the creation of a pilot program to develop, and, forgive me, to develop and then launch a pilot program of support, which you're calling POST, a post-overdose support team. I'm curious about, you're asking us to authorize entering into agreement with the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and I don't know a lot about them, and I'm just curious if you can help enlighten me.
Yes, so this is a federal organization that provides all the grants that come from either Congress, or, well, Congress, the House of Representatives, or the Senate. And so they're just a federal grant that can keep more of the checks and balances, and make the programs not be political, but be a public policy-based. So they mainly focus on mental and behavioral health programs and substance abuse programs, so that's why they decided to use this federal agency, which our Department of Management and Budget will be working with to provide the reports, to provide data. So this bill asks you all to approve that we can receive the grant and start the pilot program. But this, although the agency is federal, we have the ability to decide what the geographic location of impact is. And once we prove concept, we could be able to apply again to different grants. But it's in good standing, if we already had a SAMSA grant, to receive more grants, so that we can expand it to the rest of the city.
I think as we get down this road, council would be very, very interested in knowing, I guess the only way to know how to say this, is the success rate of the investment that we're making here. A million dollars sounds like a lot of money, but in the battle against addiction, it is merely a drop in the bucket in terms of the need out there. So I certainly would be very interested, and I can't imagine other members would not be interested as well as to being kept abreast of the success rate and the outcomes of the program. It sounds to me like you're pretty well on your way, even though this bill speaks to the development and piloting of this POST program, but it sounds to me like you are tailoring a lot of it from other cities or other, I'll say, other agencies that have used these same tactics to fight overdose and addiction. Can you tell me, please, if you have a sense of just how far this investment may go? Is this a, will the pilot end up being one year, and money will be expended? Is this looking at more of like a five-year approach? Or can you give me a sense of timeline and approach, and, you know, the, what you hope to be, the expected outcomes?
Yes, thank you. It's exactly, it seems like a lot of money, but honestly, for the fight that we're having with overdoses, it would only allow us to do a pilot program in these two areas, and it, because of the way that requisition is done through Congress, they just do a one-year, but because the SAMSA is the one distributing, we've had conversations, and they have agreed that we could have an extension to spend all the money. So this would be a one-year where we would have to prove concept in order to get more funding. So that's the conversations that we've been having with the different grant agency, different providers in Pittsburgh, as well as with the Director of Public Safety, the mayor's office, and the policy manager, Ricky Moody, who has provided us a lot of subject matter expertise, as this was his field. We're going to have an agency overseeing it that's part of the program, but it's an advisory board, where we're going to invite experts to guide us who have been doing this type of work. But we hope, just by the need that we're seeing, that we can extend this to more of a five-year. But usually with these grants, because it's such a new program in Pittsburgh, they want us to prove the concept before they can commit to further funding. Part of the funding does include us to develop a data collection process. So we currently have Gelata in the office, and we have money to build a specifically portion within Gelata to keep tracking. Those are the maps and the services that I showed previously to council in a presentation. I have my data analyst behind us who is just recently hired, so I see no problem providing any type of reports and updates, and I think this is the way that we can prove to get further funding.
Appreciate it. Can you tell me, please, is any of this, since if I understand you correctly, that much of this is being done in-house through our Department of Emergency Medical Services? Is any of this going towards supporting salaries within city departments to effectuate this? Or is this more in purchasing of Narcan, of software, of, you know, those kinds of, you know, technical support to get this program launched?
Yes, so a big part of the budget goes to hiring new staff, because this has never done, has never been done by the city. So we will have to hire those case managers, those peer recovery specialists that will be city employees based on a grant. We will be providing training to EMS as well, and our new staff. And then the other part is we'll be purchasing those cars for them to be able to deploy, because what we see is if we miss that time, then people usually leave. We also are going to be providing technical supplies, as you mentioned, but also being able, what has been successful in other areas is the ability to purchase, for example, bus passes for people to transport to the different rehabilitation centers or mental health and behavioral health providers, also providing them with food, providing them with clothing, providing them with water. So it's a different, it's a budget that includes salary, operations, training, technology, in order to be able to prove the concept and support the population in need.
Thank you very much for that, that was very helpful. I, for one, I certainly don't want to speak for other members, but I, for one, would love to see a breakdown as to what is being invested in vehicles, what's being invested in support salaries, and then what ultimately, I don't know how better to say it, gets out on the street in terms of, you know, hands-on direct support for those struggling with addiction. I will certainly vote this today, but before final vote, I would, I would need to see a breakdown in the, in the areas of salary, vehicle, and then the supplemental support that actually goes out and performs the hands-on work. I appreciate it. I know I asked a lot of questions. Clearly, this is a subject near and dear to my heart. I appreciate your time, thank you for coming prepared to be able to answer the questions that I asked, and I will end my comment for this time. I may ask second round, but for now, I'm done. Madam President, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Really good points. Councilman Coghill, Chairperson. Councilman Coghill.
I thought you had your hand up.
I know, but I defer to you because you're the-
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. No, I just wanted to add, first of all, at the request of the administration, Lee Schmidt, we are going to have a POST agenda I will be calling for today. I'll wait, I guess, until the end of the meeting, I'll call for that. So, to your questions, Councilman Kraus, I agree with you, I want to, I'd like to see that, all that data, and, you know, where the money's being spent. But we will have probably an hour or so next week to get more into the conversation and the facts and everything else that goes along with it, so, so I just wanted to add that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thanks, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus, thank you for your word, Councilman.
Appreciate it. And it's Director Alakon, right? Did I say that right, correctly? Thank you, I appreciate that. So I first want to give you, to say thank you, because we have several homeless camps in the district that you've been really responsive to my office with, and I really appreciate it, and we're able to report back to the neighbors. We've got OCHS out there, working with the people in the tents, in the parks, and it's, it's good to know that they are connected to the system, and now in the queue for housing, permanent housing, so I really appreciate that. And then secondly, just to update council, also, Director Alakon has been really helpful in the resolution that we passed earlier this year to have resources for frontline workers. So we're finally getting that off the ground. I think we already have, we have a date set.
Yes, we have a date.
So you've been, you've been very busy, so I really appreciate that. So we have a date set in November for the first kind of more resource fair, working with nighttime economy, working with various other stakeholders, so I'm really, really grateful. Because I, in between passing that legislation and us talking about these issues at the table, and having these changes at OCHS, my chief of staff and I were at a cafe recently in Bloomfield, right on Liberty Avenue. It used to be Crazy Mocha, now it's Sims Coffee, and there was an overdose. On the sidewalk. And the barista had to run out, right in the middle of talking to a customer, she had the Narcan, and she was able to administer it. And this is exactly what we're talking about, right? And so what I'm seeing in your flow chart, which is really helpful and illustrative, is that you've been working with EMS, because what we've been doing up till today is that, you know, EMS comes, but then EMS leaves.
Correct.
And you've still got a person in crisis.
Correct.
Right? And so we've got federal funding to help that person, right? That's what I'm seeing here.
Yes.
That's what we're doing here. So I'm really enthusiastic to see if this is something that's going to help that person from, from...because we know that these are recurring.
Yes.
Right? The people who are most in crisis stay...are staying in crisis, and we need to help them move out of that crisis. So we have federal funding to hire the person who would show up after the EMS truck leaves.
Correct.
And so...and we know, you know, I know from doing a ride-along even 10 years ago when this was less of a crisis, that we have very high-frequency visitors. We've talked about that, the high-frequency callers to 911 are the people that take up the most resources of EMS. So that we've got federal funding to hire someone who can do the follow-up, to even pay for the vehicle. We struggle to pay for vehicles for our staff. We were just talking about our city farmers and Parks Rec people couldn't deliver compost and mulch and things because they didn't have a vehicle, right? So thank you to Councilman Kalkil for working on that. So that federal funding can cover that, but then also the direct services to the residents in crisis. So this seems amazing, and I really, really hope it works. So thank you for bringing it to us. I think I'll give you a chance to respond.
No, thank you. It's exactly, you know, one of the things that we didn't mention is there's a community component to this program as well because as we see, the community has had to respond to these overdoses. So part of the staff is a community engagement coordinator that will go to the communities, educate them, provide them with Narcan, with training, so that the community is also understanding, and we can also give the community the resources that they need. The city has never had peer recovery specialists. The county has. So I think having federal funding, the opportunity to finally have peer recovery specialists, this is one of the reasons that these type of programs fail because people who are in crisis don't trust a lot. But if they have someone who has experienced the same thing and now is in a position of being stable, of being successful, it provides mentorship, it provides inspiration for them. And as we said, the cars are something that we struggle to get money for in our department. So to have the federal funding to be able to purchase them, I would be more than happy to send you the budget that was approved by Congressman Doyle and then the federal grant. One of the good things of having SAMSA is they understand that people have to get transported. The people who we're serving don't have means, so having those cars and having those different resources really provides the right care for them.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all you do and for being here today and answering our questions. I'll ask...it's sort of a delicate question, but I'm just going to ask it because I want to know how effective we all are at our different jobs. And so I know that the...our EMS and our fire...you know, all of our first responders take a lot of pride in being first responders, right? To be their first on the scene to administer care in any way that they need to. And I also know that those who potentially are regularly needing our care in this particular way, you know, regular overdoses, seeking our services in that way multiple times, can not always, sometimes be skeptical even of our first responders who are there to help. Is there...is there any comment that you can make on that, understanding that, like, this team is not necessarily going to be the first responder, they're going to be there as the EMS...so I guess two-part question. One, what can we continue to do to build trust that, you know, within the community that's needing these services? And second, what...how confident are you that our first responders will...
Embrace.
Embrace this, you know, put whatever sort of ego...I don't even want to call it ego, just like pride in their work, you know, and make sure that they're embracing this as not an alternative, but as a supplement to their work.
Yes, we found that in a lot of places, if you bypass EMS or our first responders, it usually fails...we're not ready as a city to have an alternative response for these situations. So having EMS be the first response and then this team being a secondary response at the request of EMS is what has worked in other states. Jessie's here because she is working with EMS. So what our office has that other programs don't have is liaisons. So we liaise with EMS. So part of this program will be to educate and train both together so they can start seeing what each other does and developing trust. But Jessie has been working in the past six months directly with EMS, with the stations that we will be working on.
Yeah, and I will say, we have been running like a EMS unit day on Wednesdays now in the city where we have a paramedic and a social worker in an EMS van, and we're there to help respond to calls that may be not necessarily like medical emergencies since the EMS system in the city of Pittsburgh is so overloaded right now. So we're trying to help with that. We're trying to help with burnout of the frontline workers. And I have been talking with all of the EMS, like the paramedics, everyone we work with, and I think they're all coming to a point of understanding of, you know, we don't have the resources to help some of these people. We're seeing them over and over. And so I haven't really run into a lot of pushback from them where they feel like this is us overstepping our bounds or taking their jobs. I think they really want to work in collaboration with us. And it also helps that we are a part of public safety.
We are public.
And we have been working with them for two years, and we have done a lot of amazing things in this office.
They even, which I think is a great buy-in, they offered for our teams to be stationed at their medic stations. So that's a great way for them to be day-to-day. You know, a lot of our social workers in co-response are in the substation, and they've been bonding and really providing a lot of support for the police. And so I think we have buy-in, but buying will continue to grow as they see the support as a resource.
As we do the work, they'll...and it's being successful, they'll have more buy-in.
Yeah, clearly. Thank you. My second question, a little bit more off-track of this, but relative to the bill that Councilwoman Gross had helped shepherd through, and I'm glad to hear it's happening. Is there...is that inclusive of, or is there another program that's including working directly with our Carnegie...strategically with our Carnegie libraries and our librarians who, in some branches, are really overloaded with essentially taking on the role as librarians of social workers and not prepared for that? I have two stories I can think of. One involves our brand-new director of our Carnegie libraries, like, second day on the job, touring a branch that he'd never met before and having to, you know, call for assistance for an overdose right in the library. So how are we providing support to librarians?
I know specifically with downtown right now, since we have a co-response unit, and it's a social worker that walks the beat with sergeant. We have been working very closely with the downtown library. I know that is going to be a plan as we expand into different zones with co-response, just because we understand that the library is a wonderful resource and a lot of people are using it. And the librarians are becoming overwhelmed with a lot of these issues that they're running into. So we have been working very closely with the downtown library. They offer us space for if someone's in crisis, we can go take them there, you know, relax, talk with them, see what we can do, have our computers out, applying for things with them. And they've been calling us when they need something instead of calling 911. So we've been trying really hard to work with the library because it is an amazing resource.
Okay, great. Yeah, particularly downtown branch. I know it's feeling the pressure here.
The great thing about the resolution that we've been working with Congresswoman Gross is that we canvass the areas where we're going to do the different...it's called like the safety, community and safety fairs, which we would like to be in every single...we want to do it citywide, so we would work with you all to see what is needed. So, for example, there might be...it's not a business, but it's still a public space where people come. So if we canvass the area and there's a need, we can also have them participate and train them. The great thing about this new public resource fair, it's not a resource fair, it's a public safety fair that we're going to do, is we're not only providing training to do Narcan, de-escalation, but we're also going to have PAR be a part of it. So because there's a lot of sexual violence that also happens, but we're also going to have...we have a new staff member who's part of the Roots Program, who's going to be providing also with frontline workers, training about how to deal with an unhoused individual, what services they have. We're going to have Big Bird. So it's a pretty complete resource that I think can be translated. And so we want to do it quarterly and go to every district and make sure that frontline workers feel supported.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, so I wanted to ask, well, first of all, about the staffing. So, I mean, when I think of all these, so there's like...there's sort of different groups of social workers. Are they...do they...are they ultimately all going to be able to do all of these things so that you don't have just, like, just one person waiting for an overdose call as opposed to, like, someone who can do...
Yes. Yes. We saw that the need was so high that that's why we're going to have three teams. So there's going to be three case managers, three peer recovery specialists. At the same time, what has made this successful in other places, which our office has, we have the co-response unit. We have the diversion program launching soon. We have our social workers who are able to provide. But that second response, we have three teams that are...so if one gets called downtown, but there's one happening in medic station three, which is South Side, they can deploy to that, and there's still one team that is, if something else happened, they can deploy.
So are we talking ultimately about a team that has kind of all the skills to handle...so for example, like, I know there's the 911 frequent...you know, folks who handle people in their home or following...okay, so the end goal would be for all these social workers to be able to do all the things or respond to all of the various types of calls around the city?
So this would be a specific team just tailored for the overdose?
I mean, this one now, but that's what I'm asking is down...I understand not now, like, because this is the start, but down the road. I mean, is that...
Yes, so our social workers have been reversing overdoses. They've been providing every type of resource because we hire MSWs, so they have not only, like, the field experience, they have clinical, they have done all the service provider. Many of them come from different services that we use. But I think one of the things that also helps our social workers is we've been working, it's called a crisis response team, with the county, which has never been done. So the county has worked very much in silos, and the city shouldn't really be owning human services. That's the county's responsibility. So what we've been doing is just being a resource of support. So we have Resolve, we have their field team, we have their homeless outreach, we have our social workers and our co-response officers. We all meet and we discuss the highest-security, most-complex cases because what we have been finding is a lot of gaps in services. We can't get people, so we respond. But once we try to get them the help they need, that's where the gaps occur. But having the county on the table holds them accountable, but it also provides a good resource of support.
Okay, so that...yeah, so I mean, just because I would just want to make sure that we aren't creating, like, I mean, that's sort of one of, I think, the biggest pain points with public safety overall is just the siloed nature of it, right? You have fire, you have EMS, and it's like, and none of them do the other ones' thing, although they actually do, right? Like, so fire, I think they said they have, what was it, something like 70% of their calls are EMS calls?
Yeah. They respond together on the scene most of the times, the three of them.
Yeah.
Sometimes fire is the first one to respond. So the office has worked on those silos, so now we work together. A lot of the issues were like, you know, unions and communications. So because it's an office and they're liaisons, we are able to work more in a collaborative sense, like, our data analyst finally is going to have access to all the data so we can actually get a real indication of what's happening, not just what EMS is seeing, what fire's seeing, what police is seeing, but as a whole.
Okay, and so...and will fire, will they also be trained as well, like, to call you, like, if they get an overdose, to call you guys and make sure...or not you, but like, this team?
So what happens with fire is usually they will step for EMS to come because of the medics, and then EMS assesses if the person needs to be transported to the hospital. So EMS will, for now, always be the sec...like, calling for secondary response because fire defers to EMS on scene. It's very atypical, but...
Yeah, and inherently, in this program, we are putting in an aspect of, like, continuous assessment of the program as we're going because we're trying to prove the most need in one year, which is not a lot of time. So we're planning to completely keep reassessing it. Right now, we're starting with EMS just to see, because we don't want...we're going to hire...we don't know when, how many teams we'll be getting. So say we have one solid team to start, we don't want to have 100 referrals for them in a week because that's just a lot. So we're starting with EMS, seeing what the load is on that. And then if we see, like, okay, we're...like, I know fire and police respond to overdoses as well. So we're trying to see, okay, if we're not getting as many as we feel like our teams can handle with EMS, yeah, we can expand to fire and teach them how to use this, how to call us. And then even we can expand it to police too in the future. Right now, we're starting with EMS just to, you know, keep it low and slow to start to see...because there is...we're noticing a huge need, so we don't want to get...open the floodgates.
And fire works...we have a...we do ride-alongs with fire as well, a social worker. So they can always refer to the case manager. So they can refer their cases to the...so if they see someone who's currently recurring, but they might not be there to revive them, they can still refer them to our program. And with police, that's why co-response has been successful because they have the social worker that then can refer them to the Roots Program, the Post Program, or the Lead Program.
Okay, so yeah, so then that's my last question. So where it says, you know, the final...the final step is that the post-team leaves the scene and completes documentation. So as far as the follow-up, so I mean, there's the one-time interaction with the person. How...how often does the post...is the post person going to continue to follow up, or do they immediately pass them over to the county and then...
No.
Okay, yeah, so...
So that's why it's intense case management because the case manager is doing the follow-up constantly until the person is stabilized, until the person...so case managers usually don't graduate people until people are ready to say, "I'm good, I don't need this program anymore." That's why we needed both a case manager and a peer recovery specialist because they provide the trust for the first encounter, but then they will be...they have a caseload and they have to follow up, and they meet people where they're at. A lot of these people don't have, like, a permanent home, so they have to go to the encampments. They have to go to the different shelters. So that's why case management is the right way to go here because before, what we were seeing, I think there was an attempt to do this previously. It was a one-time touch, right? And so...and then we refer them to the county. And this would be an advocate for the person to ensure that the county services are being provided.
Okay, yeah, so that's kind of...I mean, I guess that's something that will sort of work out over time, but I mean, where, you know, you have this, like, I mean, like you said, the county, I mean, really, it's the county that, like, the case manager should be working for the county, not the city. But obviously, these folks are in the city and, you know, yeah, they're in crisis and we need to help them. So, I mean, over time, ideally, our city case managers would be able to hand someone off to a county case manager.
Correct.
But again, it's like making sure, I mean, not to disparage it, but, you know, when you're talking about trust, it's about us trusting the county to then be continuing to do that work.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
For over the long term because, I mean, at the end of it, you talk about overload. If we started being the case manager for every person in crisis in the city, then all of a sudden, your team of three is overloaded in a split second, right?
So the county has, for example, in the different providers and rehab facilities that we've been talking to, they have case managers. So the case manager for the city is almost like a resource navigator, networker, advocate to make sure that they are receiving the case management from the county. But there are...we've been having really good conversations with the county, particular DHS, and they're very interested in not only collaborating and understanding the gaps in services, but the opportunity to fund programs. So they would still be city case managers to represent city citizens, but they could be funded by the county, not by the city or a grant.
Right. I mean, ultimately, it would be nice...I mean, I don't know what kind of IT setup you have, but it would be nice for each person to be in a system and anybody...so that the person that's...rather than calling the county, like, "Oh, are you following up with this person?", just be able to look and be like, "Okay, this was the last interaction", anyway.
Yeah. The county does have a big...it's a big warehouse where they store all our data, and because of this collaboration, they've allowed our social workers to see some things before they have to do all the investigative work and kind of serve people blind. So these relationships have opened up. We're currently working on sharing agreements. Our Gelata allows all our social workers, case managers, and outreach workers to see different participants that cross-pollinate the programs. But, you know, with different privacy agreements, we're working with our law... Um, but, you know, with different um privacy agreements, we're working um with our law department and they're working with our, to share more information so that people could know where they're at.
Great, it's a big job.
Thank you, anyone else first round? I have a few questions, I just um, first, I have one, um, this is from Ricky Moody, are you going to be updating the overdose dashboard data?
Yes, so we are, our data analyst is behind us, we, the person who was doing that left and no one filled up that role. And so we're actually trying to see if we can make it a little bit more user-friendly for the public. Um, and now that he has access to not only EMS data, but also police data, that overdose dashboard was just being populated by EMS. So we're trying to have it be more complete, so I think in the next couple of months, we will resume the, the dashboard.
Okay, and then you mentioned that, yeah, something about a hotel, that there'd be, could you tell us where that?
Yes, so what we're seeing is, because there's such high demand, when people need to get buprenorphine or methadone or their mat, they don't get a bed, and most of these people don't have anywhere to stay, so that's the time where they overdose again. So a lot of these programs work with providing them space, like we do this with outreach. A lot of the people who are in encampments before they transition into their housing, we put them in uh motel or hotels that we work with.
So could you name where those hotels are?
Yes.
Could you name where those hotels are, please?
Um, so some of the hotels are in areas that are not highly populated, so that they're not visible, but because of like protection of the individual, we don't like to say necessarily specific, but we work a lot with um the um mainly the Marriott Hilton. Um, but we try to have them in places where there's not a dense population. So, for example, they're not gonna be in downtown, but we're gonna.
So they won't be in downtown where the program's piloted? And they probably won't be in the south side where the program's piloted? But they'll probably be in maybe Councilman Cog Hill's district, possibly my district, and other places, I want you to address that.
Yeah, of course, so the reason that we're trying to put them close to where their rehab is or where they're gonna receive buprenorphine, but that's not, they don't stay there. That's just for a night until they can get into their treatment. Um, the program hasn't launched yet, so we have to talk to the different providers um of where we can do them, sometimes they do have to be in downtown. So most of our outreach are in downtown because their services are in downtown. So we usually place people where the services are at.
So I'm gonna have a broader discussion about this, but I, I won't do it today, but I'm, I'm gonna abstain today. But um I also have concerns with us adding more city employees, as you know, our budget's very tight. We had the preliminary um internal briefings, budget briefings, and our budget is extremely tight. And I hear you're saying that possibly the county who's currently there, that could all change come January, depending on who's elected. Um, the county's saying that they would pay for that.
No, so what I was saying is that this is grant-funded, so this won't be going into the budget, the city budget, it won't be part of.
But you're saying if, i- if it's successful, there's a possibility of it being for five years, if it's successful, and you could um possibly obtain additional grant funds. But that we are talking about possibly making these employees city employees. And so therefore, we're either gonna have to lay them off when the grant's over, or we're going to have to find additional funding. And what I'm wanting to know, do you anticipate that funding to be additional grant funding? Or do you expect it to come out of the budget?
Eh, it's, we work usually with these programs, we try to do grant funding because it's a proof of concept. Um, so we have a current program that's similar. HR is very clear, so we, we put in the job description and while we're hiring, we say it's only for twelve months. So people don't expect to have to be hired, there's, and there's no liability for the city. So we would continue to proceed with grant funding, to find grant funding. This is something, uh, for example, the opioid settlement fund that funds a lot of these programs. The county, I think, gets twenty-five million dollars, the city gets a hundred and forty-four. So it's a conversation that we continue to have with the county because they're interested, that we could pitch to them and they could fund it.
And so what I would really like to see is us, I mean, first, I love the idea of OCHS, I love the idea of having social workers here with us. And as I mentioned to you, over time, we have seen increased issues in downtown, south side. Now we're seeing them in our side of town and other, and I know Councilwoman uh Strasburger has seen some in her side of town because we've gotten phone calls for that too. And um, so we're seeing it spread across the city, and Councilwoman Gross just mentioned hers. What I'd wanna see is a reduction in, in the issues, not increases in the issues. And so for me, for us to say we're taking something off the county to do it better, then we wanna see results. And so I, I think this might be a help, so I hope that it is helpful. So I'm, I don't wanna say too much more, you know, about it, other than, you know, I have a concern about how we're doing it, that we're tracking results and um, and how it's gonna affect our districts. Because we do see things in our district, whether it's important or relevant to, you know, you or the city of Pittsburgh or the mayor's office, it's extremely relevant to us and to our residents that see, even if they see one thing. But in Elliot, I have videos of people, of what they're dealing with over there. And in the West End proper, um, so I have videos and actually, they've given them to the media. But instead of coming to our police and to our city, you know, people that are responsible, they went to people outside and countywide to get them to respond better, and they got a great response, and so they're feeling better about that. But they should be able to call the nine one one and get the same response here and not have to figure out how to navigate the system to get a response from the city of Pittsburgh. So what they did was, they've got a response from the county, so I thank the county for their response. But I feel badly that they feel like they cannot rely on us, you know, and to come to us directly. So today, I'm gonna abstain till we have some further conversations about the hotels and um, and the employee status.
Madam President, map second round available?
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, uh, two things come to mind as the conversation goes around the table. Um, any of us that believe the problems of addiction, I'll use that term broadly, are limited to only a few uh specific areas of the city, is kidding themselves. The last several surgeon generals have called the disease of addiction the number one health crisis in this nation. And it may take on different uh appearances. Uh, but I guarantee you, it's as pervasive as anything has ever been um in our, in our culture. Uh, it takes different shapes and forms and sizes and faces, uh, some are housed, some are unhoused. But the, the problem of uh addiction, especially as it relates to uh opiate uh and fentanyl is universal, it is across this city. Uh, and we would be um negligent not to recognize uh the need is, is truly that great and that pervasive. Uh, the second, uh, the um, it was offered up in, in conversation that there was a budget that was sent over uh to the administration from Congressman Doyle, uh, that Congressman Doyle approved uh in terms of the expenditures of this money. If you were just to send that over to the clerk's office for the distribution to members, I think that alone would be very helpful in understanding uh how we expect these monies to ultimately be spent. Thank you, thank you, Madam President, for that.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Cog Hill.
Yep, thank you. First of all, Director, I am scratching this from our agenda next week, I think we vetted it pretty well by this point, okay? So hopefully, this is one less subject that we, and if it's any indication, it's that a length of a meeting next week, we're gonna have to block off about six hours, I think, so.
Yeah, that's why we asked an hour.
But I really appreciate the work you do, it's very difficult work, you know, we all know that. And I'm really happy that you're receiving these funds. Uh, just a couple of things I wanted to address, you had mentioned most prevalent downtown in the south side. Are you going by zip code or are you going by neighborhood with that?
Yeah, so um, how EMS tracks it is through the encounter that happens. Because zip codes, a lot of the people who are downtown might have zip codes in your district, in your district, in your district. So it's just like, when the encounter happens, they track it in that specific area.
So you are talking about per neighborhood, and you're saying the south side?
And downtown.
More overdose reported than Carrick, is that what you're telling me?
That's what the EMS has been collecting and police.
Yeah, how, how far back does that data go?
So we were looking at data from nineteen to date, which, and after the pandemic, you know, it completely um exploded.
That's why I ask you if you were doing it by zip code, because I know my district, and my district is, yeah, I mean, one, five, two, ten.
Yeah, yeah.
But you're telling me it's by neighborhood, your, your data is by neighborhood.
So, for example, a lot of, maybe some of the people in Carrick are coming in those areas and then going back. So a lot of what we've been doing in Carrick, for example, are the Narcan trainings and the resource fair. We would like to go to Carrick, like, we've been having that conversation um that we just had to pick the two most prevalent because the funding was limited.
So you were focusing on these two areas for, for the first year?
For the first year, yeah. And then what, what would happen would be that what we're seeing is, we can also get referrals from your area. So for example, if you're seeing people who are recurring overdoses, you can refer them into the program. So through EMS, through yourself, through the different nine one ones, and the case manager and the peer recovery specialist can take on that case.
So but from the onset, you're focusing downtown and south side?
Yes.
I, I don't like that, I wish that, you know, my district is overrun, OD Road, ever hear, have you referred to that?
We have a lot of clients.
Right, I'm sure you do, I'm sure you do, yeah. So this service will not be used in Carrick?
The deployment, but the support can.
No matter if that person from Carrick goes to town, I get it, and then.
Yeah, that's where they're overdosing.
I mean, the goal is if we have proof of concept, we want to expand to every uh zone and neighborhood. But we unfortunately had to just pick, pick two just for it, we only have one year to do proof of concept. But I hear you, I do.
Yeah, uh.
You know, we wish that there was more funding specifically, the opioid settlement fund would be coming higher in the city. We have argued this at the state level and with the county because a lot of the places it's going outside in the municipalities don't have that recurring overdoses. So those are the conversations that, that's why we were talking about hopefully getting funded by that program to expand to the city, because we only get a hundred and forty-four thousand, and they get twenty-five million. So the money that's being allocated to the city is very minimal, and so we're trying to, to prove that it's needed.
Mm-hmm. Um, you said you have, I know you refer to your data analyst, do you know the number, is there a raw number as to what downtown, what south side is?
We can definitely get you the raw numbers, for sure.
In Carrick as well?
Yeah, we could get Carrick as well, yeah.
But you can tell me sure as the day is long that south side and downtown outweigh Carrick?
According to the police and the EMS, that's what it showed.
Okay, I'd love to see that number, I need to see that number, okay? The other thing was uh proof of concept, what is proof of concept in your opinion?
Proof of concept would show that those overdoses are, the calls to are reducing for recurring overdoses, so it would all be tracked in the data pool to see if we actually are reducing the volume call, but we're also reducing the incidence. And so also visually, you would not see as many overdoses happening.
Yeah, so the data would have to show that you have a reduction.
Exactly.
Okay, and you had mentioned two, six responders, ideally.
Ideally, no, six are, six are budgeted.
Six are budgeted?
Yes, so Congressman Doyle approved six, so we'll for sure have six.
So that's six social workers going.
Not necessarily social workers, some might be um peer recovery, like I said, peer recovery specialists, some might be um provider nurses, it depends, you know, yeah.
But there'll be responders?
Responders, correct.
And do we have a salary for them?
Yes.
And what is that?
Yes, so the salary for the case manager is sixty-four thousand, which is competitive compared to what the county um and other spaces hire. The peer recovery specialist is fifty-four. We also have to have a project manager and the community engagement coordinator, so those have all been approved. Uh, so we have the funding, it's just about getting, um, you know, we have a HR procedure that we have to go through.
Sure, sure, so roughly in salary, you're talking about four hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Vehicles, one vehicle, two vehicles?
It's gonna be, we have three, they allow three vehicles, and we worked with Fleet. Um, thirty thousand was what they budgeted per vehicle.
So, so five hundred thousand, and then other costs?
The other costs are mainly training, um, service miscellaneous, which is like providing temporary housing, providing food, providing basic needs. Then the other is the um, the platform, the technological platform, so we can show proof of concept. Um, training, I think it's like ten thousand to train EMS and.
So you basically have enough for a year?
Yes, yeah, that's what they approved, we have enough for a year.
Providing you proof, your proof of concept. Are we, is this, is this a um grant that's given out, I know other cities you've modeled this after, is this?
Yes.
Is this a grant that's given out on a regular basis through, from the government?
It de, it depends on, um, so we won, a lot of people applied to Congressman Doyle, and we just won the, the requisition grant. And so usually, cities um that we've seen successful, they pay for, for the program. But the federal government has been seeing a gap, so that's why they stepped in. And Congressman Doyle has a very close, um, it's close to his heart, and so that's why he selected.
And those six responders, they, um, that's just to cover the south side and downtown as we've discussed.
Yeah, just in today, I think our co-response unit uh reversed like two or three overdoses, so just in downtown.
That's great, I just want it to happen in my district too.
Yes, yes.
I really do, I feel my district needs it.
Yeah, before.
Yeah, and the hope is, uh, so when we're requesting money for the next year, if we have proof of concept, we won't need to, we won't need to ask for money for cars, for all that other stuff, cause we already have all the basic needs for the program.
You know, we could have a conversation about, let's, the three teams, right? The need right now in downtown, if you, like, you hear ambulances all the time, like, um, it, they're just happening at a rate that we haven't seen in the past year. Um, but if there is someone, like a team that is sitting, that needs to respond elsewhere, we can deploy them. That's why we're flexible, like, I've always wanted to have these conversations because if there's someone sitting there, and there's someone in Carrick and the West End and Lawrenceville, wherever, that needs, they can deploy there.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
It's just we have to, when we apply, say like a geographical location.
Okay, well, that's what we're gonna ask you, so, so the grant specifies two neighborhoods?
Yes.
Okay, and that's why you picked these two neighborhoods? But you're not beyond saying if there's an overdose in Carrick while you're in the south side, send them up the hill and take care of it, right? And there's no constriction?
No constriction, so we actually drafted the grant, so it, we were very vague, saying that we, if there was capability, we would expand to more than two.
Thank you, thank you.
And we do the same thing with like our co-response units, we're technically in zone one and two right now, but sometimes we get calls from five or four.
We're working in six in the West End with the Madam President, with the situation that's happening in Elliot. We've been working with our police department.
Well, I'm glad we clarified that.
Yes.
Because in my eyes, before you just said that, it was just gonna be, that's why we're talking, right? So, um, okay, so you're not, we can come to different neighborhoods if needed, of course, wherever they're needed.
Exactly.
This is just for the grant?
Yes, this is so that we could get the money, yeah.
Do the six responders have to be city employees?
Yes, for now.
I mean, city residents, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, of course, yes, they have to have the, the residency requirement.
I will look, I look forward to continuing this conversation uh next week. Again, hopefully, we put this particular item to bed, but, you know, we'll see, thanks.
Councilwoman Gross. Thank you, Councilman.
Sorry about my microphone there, sorry, just one last thing. Um, I mentioned that there's a date for that resource fair, but of course, it's not like just restricted to people, you know, who are working at restaurants or bars in Lawrenceville and Penn, but it's gonna be on Penn Avenue. Um, in, in like the Bloomfield Garfield area at a venue connected to Bantha Tea, I don't have the exact address in front of me. The reservation isn't up, but it's getting up soon, I think Go State Justice drafting the, um, the advertisement for it. So it's gonna be, if you wanna mark your calendar, it's November twentieth, and it's from two to seven. And there's gonna be kind of like hourly drop-in times to sign up for, just so we don't get like a massive people all at one time, just gonna spread it out with good COVID protocols and things like that. And so I really appreciate, again, um, there'll be more information coming, but again, you can save the date for November twentieth from two to seven. Thank you.
Thank you, and anything else from other members? I just wanna say that we've also been doing resource fairs with Ricky Moody and with our um um Office of Community Engagement in the city of Pittsburgh, and they've been doing them for over a year now, they've been doing them all over the city. And so I really wanna thank them for the work they're doing, we're getting ready to do some in the East End too, so it'd probably be good for us to coordinate how we're. We're getting ready to do some in the East End too, so it'd probably be good for us to coordinate how we're doing, you know, and what we're doing. It's, it's difficult because I would do wanna thank you because I think that there's a better communication now with our side of the hall and your side working together towards some of these things. So, I wanna thank you for that because I think that that was a conversation you, you started. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Madam President.
Um, no, thank you. And I, I feel like you're in, we put you in such a difficult situation. This is a massive problem and we're trying to say, we're gonna have our few social workers to take it on because we're not getting the response that we need from other people and, and the parties that we, that we hold accountable for these things. But I don't wanna set you up for failure. I wanna be able to help you do the things that we need to have done. And I also don't want all the problems concentrated in one area, all the solutions concentrated in one area, and then the resources and, and, um, people absorbing those things are all in different areas. Like, I don't wanna see southwest Pittsburgh become a place that everything is dumped into one area, but no resources are there. So, what I'd like to make sure is that we're getting our share of the resources there as well. And, uh, we're getting ready to do some things in, uh, Mountain View Apartments where we have a lot of, um, immigrant communities living there and, uh, people from the immigrant community living there. And I think that there's just so many challenges, um, and a lot of it is, is our communication skills and, and how we communicate with, with some of the people and get the word out of all the resources we do have available to them, whether it's in the city or countywide. So, I hope that with working together, we'll be able to do some of those things. So, thank you for, I think the, you finally have a team all working together, our office, your office, the county. And, I mean, I thi, I actually believe that was Chief, was it Chief Frank or, um, Director Schmidt, or was it you? I mean, who brought that together? Because that was a really good idea.
Yeah, so, um, we actually started when I, when I first took on the role. I saw that there was a lot of, there was no communication with the county or with different departments. So, my first month and a half, two months was to regain trust and relationships. And, um, I created that, um, group with Jen Batteredon from the Department of Human Services with the support of Chief Frank and Erin Dalton, so...
Yeah, so everybody was operating in silos and now you're all working as a team. So, I wanna thank you for that. I think you can see some differences happening and some tensions breaking down. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention?
Aye. Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
May I just offer one last piece of comment?
Yes, please.
Uh, thank you. Uh, any of you, uh, that have, um, uh, HBO Max? Uh, there is a documentary known as American Pain, which speaks to how the opiate epidemic got started in the nation. Uh, I did watch it, uh, several months back. I was absolutely horrified, horrifying at the system failures throughout the United States that allowed, um, uh, the opiate epidemic, uh, to become what it became. And so, I just wanted to offer that up if anyone was interested in, uh, tracing the, the roots of, uh, this massive epidemic that has consumed the nation. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Um, did everybody say, oh, in favor?
Yes.
Aye. And then I have one abstention. The bill's firm is really recommended. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And that was us accepting money. Imagine how long this could be when we have to pay it out.
Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Mr. Kraus. Bill number twenty-seventy-five, resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to take actions necessary for recordation of temporary construction easements over city, over certain city-owned parcels in order to advance a project for rehabilitation, reconstruction, and repair of the Charles Anderson Memorial Bridge.
Thank you, come a motion.
Motion to approve, please.
Thank you, Councilman. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's firm is really recommended.
Bill twenty-fifty-two, resolution granting a vacation of an unused, unopened portion of Lacy Way in a fourteenth ward, ninth council district.
Motion to approve, please.
Thank you, Councilman.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any, any opposed? Bill's firm is really recommended. Madam Clerk?
Bill twenty-fifty-three, resolution granting unto Duquesne University of the Holy Spirit their successors in a science that privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense. Seven bio-retention tree pits and a retaining wall at thirteen oh five Forbes Avenue, first ward, sixth council district of the city.
Have a motion?
Motion to approve, please.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed, any abstentions? Bill's firm is really recommended. We'll move on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee. Madam Clerk?
Bill twenty-thirty-one, resolution, further amending resolution number seven twenty-three of two thousand twenty-two, effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, as amended entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Capital Budget, the Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Community Development Program, and a Two Thousand and Twenty-Three through Two Thousand and Twenty-Eight Capital Improvement Program, so as to grant one hundred thousand dollars to specific public service grant projects of the mayor's office and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements."
Motion to approve, discussion? Second?
Councilman Wilson?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I just wanted, I'm a little under the weather today. I just wanted to, um, you know, take this from home. So, thank you, everyone. I wanted to, uh, give the Councilman Kraus opportunity if, to, you know, elaborate more if you'd like to. Uh, thanks, Councilman, and you sound terrible, terrible. Take care of yourself. It's just my voice. It's just my voice. Uh, thanks, Councilman, appreciate it. Uh, I appreciate members' indulgence, uh, in my, uh, journey to better understand the allocation of these funds. Uh, I wanna thank you for, um, supporting me in this. The, uh, also, I wanna thank every member of Pollock. We had a great conversation yesterday. I have the kind of understanding as to how these funds are distributed, uh, that I needed. Uh, and so, uh, I'm happy to ask members to please support this passage today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anything else from any other members? I'm just gonna say, Councilman Kraus, you're one of the few people I know that really watches the budget. You really take your job very seriously and you, um, really set a good example for all of us to follow in how you, um, pay attention to the budget. So, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Madam President.
Thank you for your work. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's firm is really recommended.
Bill eighteen seventeen, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine Zoning Code, Article Six, Chapter Nine, Nineteen, signs to regulate the use of non-advertising signs for major public destination facilities in the RIV NS District.
Uh, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Discussion?
Second?
Second.
And Councilman Wilson?
All right, um, I'm gonna try and, uh, do this the most efficient way possible since I don't sound great. So, uh, if we have, I believe I have someone in chambers, uh, from DOMI and possibly the administration would like to come and speak to, I can't see her on chambers, but I'd like to just give counsel, um, whatever you, as to what's going on here.
Can we have the members of DOMI up to the table? Which one?
The bill that we're on now. It needs to be sent to the commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Is this eighteen seventeen we're discussing?
We're gonna hold for discussion, eighteen seventeen. We're gonna hold for discussion after the discussion, Councilman Wilson, please. Councilman Wilson? Were you discussing?
Uh, yeah, so, thank you. We have, can you state who's at the table?
Angie Martinez, Assistant Director with Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Ryland Seifert, Policy Analyst with DOMI.
Great. Well, it's been a pleasure working with you and the administration on getting this to the table and getting to this point. So, there's been, um...
Point of order, I'm sorry to do this again. Councilman Wilson, I, I was also confused. We have not yet read the Smart Loading Zones bill. So, we're, we read nineteen, members think at this end of the table that we read eighteen seventeen.
It's eighteen seventeen.
We read eighteen seventeen and we're gonna motion to hold for the planning commission for report and recommendation.
After discussion with Councilman Wilson, please. Councilman Wilson, continue.
Again, Madam President, um, for Bill eighteen seventeen, um, I, so, I apologize. I do defer, I don't have questions for this team, for the, uh, people at the table right now. I do defer to Councilman, um, uh, Lovell. I believe this is, is his bill and...
And this is the bill that needs to tell. Councilman Wilson, this, if, is Councilman? Go ahead, Councilman.
If we can have a mo, if we can have a motion to hold for four weeks, Planning Commission is still in conversation with all the appropriate parties and they wanna work out a final version of the bill before we send it to the planning.
Second.
Motion to hold for four weeks.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be sent to the planning.
Thank you.
It was held for four weeks.
Nope, I'm sorry, it'll be held for four weeks. I'm sorry, did you, um...
Bill nineteen seventy-nine, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Five Traffic, Article Seven Parking, Chapter Five Forty-One, General Parking Regulations by amending Section Five Forty-One Oh Four B, entitled Smart Loading Zones to increase the maximum parking duration and by revising Section Five Forty-One Oh Four C, entitled Smart Loading Zone Rates and Penalties to include a new four-tier pricing structure.
Councilman?
Motion to approve, discussion?
Councilman Wilson, uh, second?
Second.
Councilman Wilson?
Thank you. Uh, apologize. Uh, I guess I'm a little out of practice with this hybrid thing. I've been in person so much recently. Uh, I got a little ahead of myself. I'm just so excited to talk about smart loading zones. With that said, Angie and Ryland, um, would you like to, um, give that briefing to council in public? Thanks.
Absolutely. Um, so again, this is Angie Martinez. I'm the Assistant Director of Policy Planning and Permits with DOMI. Um, we're about a year into our Smart Loading Zone Pilot Program. Um, that's a program where we're seeking to increase the efficiency, um, of loading spaces in the public right-of-way um, by allowing access to, uh, registered users, um, to park in identified zones. Um, over the year that the program has been in place, um, we've seen positive outcomes, um, of the program achieving its, uh, missions and goals. Um, we've seen a decrease of forty-eight percent of double parks, an increase of fifty percent in vehicle turnover, and a decrease park duration for tw, of twenty-three percent. So, that just means that in these dedicated spaces, um, we're seeing them being used by more users, shorter duration, um, for loading activities. Um, because this is a pilot and part of pilots are, you know, adjusting based on learnings, um, we're here today to, um, have council act on some changes that we're making to the program to make it more legible and consistent for users. Um, so the changes we'd like to call out is, um, the change in the max amount of duration for the zones from one hour to two hours. This is to make it consistent with max duration of, um, adjacent on-street parking. Um, we'll also be, um, refreshing the signs and paint for existing zones to make sure signs are more legible to users. We heard from people that they didn't understand what the program was, how to register, what the pricing structure was. And so, we've, um, created new signs, um, that we think, um, address that and make it more clear and consistent. And then, uh, the other change is a simplified fee structure. So, the, um, fees that are currently in, um, code give a price per minute. Um, we're proposing to change that to more of a tiered structure. Um, the fee structure will allow for fifteen, the first fifteen minutes to be free. And then, from there, um, uh, from sixteen minutes to thirty minutes, the price will be a hundred percent of the cost of the adjacent street parking. And then, from thirty-one to sixty minutes, two hundred percent of the cost of adjacent street parking and so on. Um, I wanna note that these fees, like the tiers, are actually a slight decrease, um, for the maximum, but it just makes the program more legible because the per-minute fee was very confusing, um, to people. So, we think that this makes it easier for everyone to understand. Um, and I wanna, uh, thank Councilman Wilson's office for, um, convening, um, conversations with stakeholders about these program changes. And, uh, yeah, we're, we're pleased to talk more about the program if there are questions.
Well, thank you and thanks for, um, you know, saying that in the public. I know we had our, our briefings with council and, uh, appreciate all the members that, um, came and asked great questions. And I wanna thank the administration for, uh, you know, during the hours today, they, they get this, get this to this point. You know, sitting on the Parking Authority Board and then also in council, you know, I had an opportunity to, um, you know, dive into this, understand, uh, the, um, you know, the issue here. And, you know, it's, it's great to know that this started, uh, with conversations initially, you know, uh, last year with small businesses and it was actually a big request from them. Uh, because, you know, it's really difficult for us to continually enforce that, that loading zone. And their, you know, delivery trucks are, don't have a place to, you know, to park. So, you know, uh, but also realizing this implementation did disturb some of the functionality of the way our small businesses run and the way people, the way their customers use the space. So, you know, if you wanna get your pizza or you wanna get your, you know, to-go dinner for, for the family, you can pull in, you can, you know, just pop out, get the food and be on your way. You know, if it's a short amount of time, that fifteen, less than fifteen minutes. But then also it allows, uh, a structure for, you know, this, this, um, this loading area to be what it was initially intended for, for loading. So, I appreciate everyone that worked on this and looking forward to, uh, the same presentation.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Warburg?
Um, yeah, thanks. Uh, so, just one, one thing quickly just to verify for the public. At le, I mean, I'm, I'm specifically focused on Squirrel Hill, but are, with the smart loading zones, are we adding new loading zones or are we just making existing loading zones now smart loading zones?
So, up until this point in the pilot, we've been converting existing loading zones at select locations into smart loading zones. Um, as we continue the pilot throughout the remainder of the year, I think we're open to putting them in different locations depending on where people are asking for them. So, we have received requests, um, from people who say, we'd like to see this on the street. And so, we can intake those and make, um, make requests or fulfill those requests.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, I just wanna kind of, so, we, we, uh, in Squirrel Hill, we recently had smart loading zones. And I think there was, we, we discussed this already. I, there was a little bit of a, of a, uh, sort of like miscommunication on that, which is, uh, unfortunately, uh, resulted in sort of a lot of bad press about this program. But, um, I just wanna underscore, well, that one point, no parking is taken away, right? These are loading zones and, and ju, just for the public, because I did sort of surprisingly get a number of calls from members of the public, not even business owners, which I think was maybe a result of the, the media around it. Um, loading zones are not parking spaces. They are not for people to park in. I mean, Councilman Wilson said this already, you know, e, even if you've been parking in the loading zone for years, you weren't supposed to be. And so, that's kind of something that we all just need to, to come to terms with, I think. Um, and, and this really is a way to help the businesses, right, to keep those spaces free. Um, I do like the, I, I think the, the updated pricing is, is nice. I mean, you know, just that first fifteen minutes, that kind of gives everyone enough leeway to, you know, if there's a line at the pizza shop or whatever, you know, you got, you're not feeling rushed that it's gonna take the picture of your license plate. Um, I'm just trying to think, uh, oh, yeah, that was my, is that with the hours, um, and I, and I, I, I missed the briefing, my staff was there, but, um... Are the hours in the loading zone back to the regular, to, to the hours of the standard parking?
Yes, so the hours of enforcement are gonna match that of meter parking, which is Monday through Saturday, eight AM to six PM.
Okay, so the only thing I'm wondering, and again, with the, is, and, and I understand that these, these things can change. And I think, um, um, Dan on my staff brought this up as well, is, um, in business districts with a lot of restaurants in particular, you do have, you know, DoorDash folks coming. And so, those loading zones are actually very useful for restaurants in, in the dinner, right, in that sort of, you know, seven to maybe nine PM slot. So, I don't know if that's something that you're looking at or is there maybe just more parking in general in those times?
I think that's a, um, that's an interesting thing for DOMI to explore expanded hours in the future. Um, again, with these changes, we were looking to create some legibility and consistency with the, um, regulation with the smart loading zone, matching it to the on-street. I think, you know, if the program, um, gets stood up into a more permanent program and we understand better what the use and demands are, um, we can consider expanding it. Um, so it's something for us to consider as, you know, we see how these changes affect, um, utilization over the remainder of the pilot period, which ends in December of next year.
Yeah, because, I mean, I know that that was a concern that was also coming from business owners since Squirrel's like, oh, you know, people normally can park after, but I, I, I just wanna remind the, again, the public, like, those folks who are driving DoorDash and that type of thing... are driving DoorDash and that type of thing, while they are not small business owners, they are at work, and they are, you know, that, that, that impacts their, you know, their take-home at the end of the day, if, if they have to stop and pay for parking, so loading zones are for them too, right, they are the same as a delivery driver or whomever. Anyway, I love this, I think it's great, and yeah, I'm glad that, that we're moving along with it, so, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. I wanted to thank you both for your work on this, Councilman Wilson and his office for your work on this, you know, it's just evidence that when we pilot a program, that the city is listening, and the city is willing, and DOMI is willing to be flexible to respond to some concerns, and this is just evidence of that. So as someone who has a district where it's maybe more adjacent to the Squirrel Hill Business District that has so many of these piloted smart loading zones, but, you know, residents and constituents who experience that on a regular basis, I'm really happy to see these changes. I think that allowing for especially the grace period is a really important component of these changes, and will hopefully allow for business owners and workers, certainly delivery drivers, from what I've heard in the kind of conversation we've had behind the scenes around, you know, the development of this, this, these amendments, and hopefully the public at large to understand that it's a small change in their behavior to allow for ultimately a safer road environment where there aren't as many double parked cars, and, you know, whether you're driving or whether you're riding a bike, like having to cross a double yellow line to get it, to get around a double parked delivery van, it's all for everyone's safety, and these changes will go a long way to helping people to bring them along, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anything else from members? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's firmly recommended. Thank you. Thank you all for your work. Thank you, Councilman Wilson. And now we'll move on to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee, Councilman Warwick.
Bill Number 2058, Resolution Amending Resolution 177 of 2022, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into an agreement or agreements with SciCom Data Systems, Inc., for professional services relating to continuing maintenance, support, and upgrades to city law, the Department of Law's current legal case management and administrative support software system, by increasing by $11,376 for a total not to exceed amount of $22,752 over two years.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? I just, was this an RFP for this?
It's an extension.
An extension? Okay, so, I'm going to abstain today because I don't usually vote on the, I try not to, so it's just a habit, I just try, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention, please. Thank you. And our next committee is Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee, Ms. Gross is the chair.
Bill 2050, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 6444 Frankstown Avenue at No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any, any in opposition? Bill's firmly recommended. Madam Clerk?
Bill 2051, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Public Works, and the Director of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a permanent easement with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for installation, maintenance, repair, operation, and removal of a sewer line on city-owned property, parcel ID 82H0000102 at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Where's this located?
In the middle of the park, in Highland Park.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's firmly recommended. Madam Clerk?
In the last bill, 2061, Resolution Requesting the Approval of an Intermunicipal Transfer of a Liquor License from the Will Bar, Inc., located at 3058 Washington Pike, Bridgeville, PA, to the applicant Games and Axes LLC, located at 2010 Josephine Street pursuant to amended Pennsylvania liquor code.
Motion to hold for cablecast public hearing.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
To be held for cablecast public hearing. An exhaustive agenda, thank goodness, I thought I'd never get through this one. Is there anything for members? Councilman Kalkiel?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. You know, we talked earlier about, you know, some of the violence going on in Pittsburgh public schools. I like to stay in my own lane, I, I'm not one to get in anybody else's business, and I know we're a separate body, you know, from the school district, but I got to speak out in this, you know, it's not a day that goes by where I don't get a video from my, my high school, Brisher High School, where there's not a brawl going on, not a fight, not two people just squaring off, I mean brawls, in, in the, in the hallways. I'm getting a load full from my residents, they think we're responsible, we're partly responsible, I tell them, "We're a separate body, and we really have nothing to do with it," but, but we do have something to do with it, these are kids that we're representing in our district, so, so I just wanted to speak out in this a little bit, you know, when I went to Brisher High School, it was the Brisher Bullets, and we dropped a name because, you know, incited violence, right? I would tell you, I was on the front end of desegregation, we didn't have one shooting there, we had a lot of fisticuffs, everybody, you know, all, all kids that age do, but something's going on in our schools right now that is just, you know, unbearable for me, you know, we never had to go through metal detectors, we, we never had to do this type of thing, so, and I believe it's killing our population, and when I say our population, you know, we all know, everybody at this table, few in particular, do great things with affordable housing, and that has certainly led to the decline of our population in the city of Pittsburgh, but I will tell you, right behind it-
By not having it, you meant, I'm sorry, right?
But, well, by not having it, yeah, I'm fighting for it, so I'm saying this body has acted on affordable housing in spades, right?
Right.
But the, the secret killer of our population is our school district. There is not one family that I talk to that has small children who do not, they hesitate to send their kids to Pittsburgh public schools. Therefore, they look for homes in Dormont, and Green Tree, and Mount Lebanon, and places where they have confidence in the school district. I'm not here to cast blame to the school district, but I want to be part of the solution, I want us to be part of the solution. I've lost confidence in the school district, to the point where it's just out of control, and I will tell you, our public safety, now that they are able to move outside of the city, the number one reason why they don't choose to stay in the city, because they have young children at a school age, public school age, and they do not want their kids going to public school. I'm a public school graduate, I, it was a great education for me, I will tell you, and great learning lessons, but, but today, people are leaving by walking out on our, our public school system. I think we need to step in, I really do, I, I would like to call post-agenda, I don't know if they'll come, whether it be Dr. Walters and the entire school board, I would like to have a post-agenda right here in this room, and to discuss how we can help. I'm not looking to cast blame, I'm not looking to say, "Hey, what are you doing, we need you to do it differently," but, but I do want to know what they're doing, I do want to know what their, you know, what their plan is to curb the violence in our school district. They have an annual budget that outweighs ours, for Pete's sake, it's unbelievable, so our schools are failing us, we saw the closure of Oliver High School last year, and to this day, I, most of my phone calls are surrounding the school district, I try my best to say, try to throw my hands up in the air, and I'm, you know, I don't know what to tell you, but, but I do want to insert myself and inject us into that conversation, so I would like to schedule a post-agenda, and I will reach out to the school board members and Dr. Walters to see if they will come here and discuss this situation with us, and I hope that other council members are interested and will attend as well, and maybe we could come up with something productive, but at the very least, let's learn what they're doing, and let's learn what the problem is. I have one high school-
I think you made a motion. Did you make a motion?
Not yet. Carrick High School has a 34% truancy rate, okay, so I don't know what's going on in the schools, you know, we, I was afraid, you know, of my parents, I guess, I, I don't know if it's coming from the, the homes, or the schools, or what, but I just want to get involved, and I want to make sure that we know what's going on, this way I can answer to my constituents when, when they call me, so with that, I'd like to call post-agenda, but to be scheduled at a later date, once I, I will write and reach out to the school district, you know, for, we'll figure out what they'll call it, but-
Did you motion then?
That's a motion?
I would like to motion for a post-agenda, thank you, thank you.
And did you want to make a second motion?
I do want to make a second post-agenda at the request of Director Schmidt to have a post-agenda for OCHS.
Okay, was motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And that will be next week.
Okay, wait, first, all in favor of the first agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll get that one scheduled.
Motion for post-agenda for OCHS.
Okay.
I believe we already have it blocked off for next week, but-
November 1st.
November 1st.
Okay. Second, again, please.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll get those scheduled, thank you. And Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, I just wanted to say, Councilman, I appreciate your comments, and I'm happy to work with you, since I'm like, government, my new Intergovernmental Affairs Committee includes educational affairs, that includes educational affairs, but I just wanted to remind members in the public that, I think my first year on council, Councilwoman Smith created a working commission on education, and we met here in chambers, it was televised, with the superintendent, board members, parents, students, and council members, and published a report, and it was, it was a year of work. And then it was just over a year ago that Councilwoman Smith also created a committee for us, she and I were on, to meet with the superintendent and board members, including the mayor's office, and started, you know, conversations about how we could collaborate. It did effectuate in the workforce collaboration that the mayor's office and the superintendent are working on, but there were many other items on the table, it was not specifically about violence, but it was about how to create those working relationships, that I think if we continue to foster, we will also have a stronger relationship with this other parallel body of government that serves the same, you know, place on the map and all the residents that we serve, and if we continue those conversations, again, that Councilwoman Smith started, that we would have a better relationship to also work on the issues around violence, so I really appreciate keeping the conversation going.
Well, as I have many a times, I will call on your help for that post-agenda, and you too, Madam President, okay, so.
Councilwoman Warwick?
I think too, for, for this, well, I, I do want to say, I, it's always a little risky to have a, you know, sort of have a meeting, be like, "We want to talk about what's wrong with you," you know, so I, I would, I would, or hopefully this post-agenda, I think we could also bring to the table the various organizations, whether it's Reach, Operation Better Block, maybe there's a number of, you know, that are getting Stop the Violence funds from the city, that are also in place in, in, in our schools, doing this type of work, it'd be nice to have also city parks at the table, just so that we can be clear at the city, you know, what are the after-school programs that we are offering, you know, to get the picture of, because again, it, and, and I, I can't comment as to what, you know, what's going on at this particular school, but it is true that at PPS, you know, they have the kids from 8 to 3 or whatever, and that's, that's when they have them, and the rest of the time, it's on, right, that, that's when the ci, I mean, that's sort of like when the city has them, right, when they're in the school, PPS has them, and when they're out of the school, we have them, so that's, that's, you know, splitting the time between us, I would say, in terms of, of, you know, government services, so if we could have that post-agenda also include our side of, certainly folks who are working in the schools on behalf of the city or, or using city funding, I think that would be helpful as well.
Thank you, Councilman, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to say, I, I appreciate that, and I'd appreciate your help as well. I know you have young children in the school district, so, but in no way do I want to form this as a combative, like, hey, what's wrong, you know, I want us to help, I want to try to be part of the solution, and I will address them as, in that manner, you know, now if they're saying there's no problem, then it's a bigger problem, but I think they realize that there's a big issue here, but in no way do I want to, we're not here to sass them and tell them how to do their job, where I just want to say, how can we help, that's all, but, so thank you for pointing that out, and that will be clear, loud and clear for me, as to, we want to be a part of the solution, not the problem.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you, thank you, Councilman, for, for initiating this conversation again, and my sincere hope is that, yes, this is a continuation of a conversation and not reventing the will, which I don't think you intend to do at all, and, you know, I, I understand there's a very specific mission in conversation here, which then is part of a larger, you know, almost too large for us to eat, take a bite of, but issued at hand. My sincere hope is that we can define what, and have this be the time that we not just meet once, or twice, or three times, that we define what the ongoing communication looks like, and set up the structure so that it persists even after all of us are gone from council. That is my sincere hope, like, what does that look like, and in the meantime, even if one council member is at the table, because I think these conversations are being had, we're just not there, but we're the representatives of people who answer to the public, so regardless of those conversations, if one representative, if it ends up that, like, say, a council member is represented, or two at the table where these conversations are taking place already, or in the future, I also want to make sure that we set up an internal structure so every council member is aware of that, right, internal communication, that's just all I had to say about that, because we can't be ambassadors for what they might be doing, or piloting, or trying, if we don't know about it, and communicate it back to the public. The second thing I'll say is, I'm switching gears completely, some might be aware, this is the five-year commemoration of the Pittsburgh synagogue shooting this Friday, and I wanted to make sure everyone was aware that the commemoration will once again take place in Shenley Park, at Prospect Drive, 3:00 p.m. on Friday, everyone here is invited, please join us, it's, it's always an emotional, but also a uplifting in the sense that community really comes together, and in that vein, also a new documentary that's been circulating for a bit, but has its WQED, and in fact, it's public television nationwide premiere this, this Thursday, the 26th, at 9:00 p.m. on WQED, called Repairing the World, and it really does discuss the synagogue shooting and antisemitism, and the way it affects the Jewish community here in the diaspora around the world, but also violence in, and shootings in other communities, and what that means for, you know, all of Pittsburgh, and how we all need to be intersectional in our approach to violence, so I wanted to make sure folks knew about that, 9:00 p.m. this Thursday, the 26th, really powerful film.
3:00 p.m.
Sorry, 3:00 p.m. is the commemoration on Friday, the film premiere is on WQED the day before, 9:00 p.m., yeah.
Thank you. Anything else from members?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Wilson.
Uh, thank you. I just want to make comment that, you know, although, you know, I think it's a good conversation to, you know, have with the school board and the administration, I, you know, I just caution, because, you know, it's not like they're, it's not like they're calling us to, to their meetings and, you know, and saying, "Hey, what's going on with the vacant abandoned property, you know that there's a three, you know, taxing body agreement that still needs completed, so that we can all work together to, you know, make sure the land bank is operating properly." You know, we can all get on the same page on, you know, to actually provide better housing for, for people in Pittsburgh, to make sure that there's, there's not this, these planted areas like this, you know, to actually fund the land bank yearly, and for them not to rely on, you know, ARPA funding, to actually have some solid, you know, funding to under, you know, to actually make this a realization that we're going to invest in, invest in this issue, to solve it, so, I mean, I just think that they also may say, "Hey, why don't you continue to increase, you know, our tax base so that we can provide, so we can also get more taxes," you know, like, there's real conversation to be had about how we're not, we're not doing the best that we can as well, you know, we could change our zoning multiple ways to make it easier for development to be built, affordable housing development to be built. I mean, there's just, there's just real conversations that we need to look internally as well, so I just want to, we should keep that in mind as we go forward to talk to, you know, to have those discussions with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from members? I'm going to add to it.
Okay.
So I will just say that I think I'm in a unique situation, where I actually worked for Pittsburgh Public Schools, my kids attended Pittsburgh Public Schools, and I also have a future daughter-in-law currently working for Pittsburgh Public Schools, I absolutely support, I have a family of teachers, I absolutely support, you know, our, our unions, our teachers, but above all, I put the kids in the city of Pittsburgh first, and there is nothing good about seeing the kinds of fights that we have seen happen, and the videos that we have seen, there are children terrified to go to school every single day, there are children terrified to walk our communities, this is all of our problems, and everything, we all do have some responsibility, and I absolutely believe if there's something we- we should be doing, or could be doing here in the city, we should be doing it and working with them. We need to not work in silos, but to work together for the betterment of our city and our kids. And I think that, that's one of the reasons I very initially started something, a committee, a task force. Then we started another task force, working with other people. And the bottom line for me is, there's a lot of egos, and a lot of adults putting their best interests and their needs before the kids in the city of Pittsburgh, and before the betterment of the city of Pittsburgh. And it's time for all of us to put aside all these differences, and do what's best to keep our kids safe, and to grow our city, and to make sure that we're having safe neighborhoods, safe schools, and safe homes for our kids. They're, they're a product of what is happening in their homes, a lot of times, or not happening in their homes, or not happening in their communities, and not happening in their schools, or happening in their schools. So, it's not, we want to, everyone wants to blame the kids, but there's a lot of adults here that need to pick up, you know, and take up some responsibility, and to have some hard conversations, whether we like it or not. There is a part of us that is, that's why we added education to Councilwoman Gross's committee, is because there's something, I believe it's in our charter, about us working with Pittsburgh public schools. Yes, we're separate bodies, but we're, we should all be on one team. And, and that team should be, you know, the kids in the city of Pittsburgh, their betterment. We can disagree on what might be the priorities, and what might be the answers. But if we're not even having conversations together, and if you just have one group, you know, we're a separate body from the mayor's office, we're separate, you know, we're all separate here. We're separate from the school district, but we're separate from the county. That doesn't mean we shouldn't all be working together. And the county has some responsibility too, because they're, we're, city of Pittsburgh's in the county. So, I think it's time for all of us to sit down and try to figure out how we can make this a safer, better city, and our school district, a safer, better school district for everyone. But our kids have got to be the primary focus. With that said, I'm, I'm thankful that you brought the subject up, that we're going to discuss this. And I welcome the school district to come to the table and work with us. One of the things I initially tried to do was not make this a public conversation. I tried to have meetings where we could work through things. But like everything else, and like previous, you know, previous task force, it becomes an issue of what foundations want, what, you know, mayor's office wants, we have different mayors, what a teachers' union wants, what parents, it become, in organizations. And instead, they're the focus instead of the kids. So, I think just let's stay focused on the kids now. That said, is there anything else from members? Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Excuse the absent member. Do we all do that for this meeting? Improve the me, improve the minutes?
Improve the meeting?
Improve the minutes. Do we do that there? Okay. I look at the sheet. I'm just going by my head.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.